Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call the West Covina City Council to order. This is Tuesday, December 6th, 2011. We'll begin with our invocation from Pastor Nestor Ribong from St. Christopher's Church, followed by our presentation of colors. So please rise. Excuse me just one second. I think we're going to get the colors first.
Hey. Hold. Hey. Hey. Here. Color. Raise that. Color.
Okay Pastor.
Heavenly Father, from the beginning of time, you have invited your own creation men and women to assist you in governing the world, to keep it good and make it better. We present to you this, our council members, officers of our city. We leave them up to you as you have called them to assist you in governing our wonderful city. Fill them with your spirit so that they may truly see the difference between what is right and what is wrong. Fill them with your courage so that they will always opt to do what will bring about the common good for all the citizens of this wonderful city. May they be filled with peace in the thought that they have tried and they have done their best to make this our city the best city in your kingdom. Bless all the residents. Bless all our men and women in uniform. Bless our firefighters. But most especially, Heavenly Father, I should bless those who are alone and lonely, those who are suffering, those who have lost their jobs, lost their homes, and those who are not even sure if they will have a bright Christmas season. Fill them with hope, Father, and fill them with peace and joy. May they find many men and women, fellow citizens of this city, willing to open their hearts to help them so that they may continue having hope. We present these our prayers in the name of Jesus, your son, and our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Please join with me in our pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Color. Hold. Color. Hold. On. Right. Hey. Hold. On.
You may be seated. I want to thank the West Covina High School Air Force Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps for presentation of colors tonight. Thank you. And I also want to thank Pastor Nestor Ribong from St. Christopher's Church. Thank you for coming out for our invocation. Okay, City Clerk, roll call.
Mayor Chairman Herford.
Here.
Mayor Protam Vice Chairman Toohey.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust. Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Okay, we were in closed session prior to coming into open session. City Attorney, is there anything to report out?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The record should reflect that the West Covina City Council and Community Development Commission did hold the closed session as posted on the Notice of Special Meeting. And this is reported out from closed session regarding the three city items. The record should reflect that the council members, Lane, Sanderson, Mayor Protam Toohey, and Mayor Herford were all present for all three items. With regard to the first item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9c. Record should reflect that there was a report provided by staff. Direction was given to staff and to the city attorney's office. However, there was no final action taken and nothing further to report on that item. In regard to the second item, conference with legal counsel existing in litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9a. The record should reflect that there was a report provided by special counsel. No final action was taken, nothing further to report on that item. Regarding the final city item, public employment pursuant to government code section 54957. There was a report provided by staff. No final action was taken, nothing further to report on that item. And then shifting to the CDC items. For the two CDC items, all members of the CDC board were present with the exception of Board Member Armbrust. Regarding the first CDC item pursuant to government code section 54956.8. There was a report provided by staff. There was no final action taken on that item, nothing further to report. With regard to the final item, there was a report provided by staff and there was no action taken on that item. There was no final action taken on that item, nothing further to report. And that concludes my report out from closed session.
Okay, thank you. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
I have no changes to the report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I would like to make a special announcement. As you can see, tonight is a special event for the city and a special night for the West Covina City Council. The certification, the election results, and the swearing in of a new mayor are semi-annual events and proud moments for family, friends, and residents of West Covina. Because this is a very ceremonial night, I request, and I repeat, this is only a request, that negativity is saved for another meeting. I repeat, this is only a request, and I understand this statement is nothing more than my desire to have a positive transition in the leadership of the city. In our world today, ceremonial events sometimes are diminished, and I hope tonight we can be a night of great pride for our city. Okay, with that, we will move on to presentations. We have the honor tonight to announce some new firefighter, paramedics, and firefighters here in the city of West Covina. I'd like to call forward our chief, Fire Chief for the city of West Covina, Mr. Paul Segala.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of West Covina. It's a very proud evening for us. This has been a rare opportunity for the city to hire 12 new employees. And that was made possible through the Federal Emergency Management Agency, which granted the city the full salary and benefits for 12 new employees for the next two years. So we were very fortunate to obtain that grant. And in order to share that with the city, we would like to present the new firefighters as an introduction this evening. We did have the opportunity on Saturday to have a formal swearing in ceremony, and we were fortunate enough to have many of the new members' families with us that day, and it was a great celebration. But we wanted an opportunity to introduce them to you tonight. So if I could, I will bring them forward one at a time. And first is firefighter, paramedic Adam Bickford. Firefighter, paramedic Carlos Galvez. Firefighter, paramedic Daniel Perez. Firefighter, paramedic Ryan Schwartz. Firefighter Jeffrey Adams. Firefighter Peter Aguilar. Firefighter Kyle Busby. Firefighter Steve Phillingham. Firefighter Nicholas Johnson. Firefighter Arthur Lim. Firefighter Jeremy Mack. And firefighter Sean Wise. And I should point out that this has allowed our city now to restore some services that were cut due to some severe budget constraints that we've had in the past year. So we now are fortunate enough to have water pumping capability in all five of our fire districts. And also fortunately, through cooperation of the city council, the city administration, and the firefighters' union, we were able to come up with an alternate delivery system that allowed us to hire firefighters and firefighter paramedics that would help protect the city. So once again, if I could, have one big round of applause for these minutes. Thank you.
Thank you Chief, and welcome guys. Okay, next item on the agenda is oral communications. This is a time for residents and non-residents to voice an opinion or a thought in front of the city council that's in the purview of the city council. So you have five minutes for each speaker. Obviously, you don't have to take the entire five minutes, but you're free to use that. First speaker tonight is Jorge Marquez.
Good evening, council staff and citizens of West Covina. My name is Jorge Marquez with State Senator Ed Hernandez. And I guess I came on a good day because we got a lot of people here today. Just want to let everyone know that Senator Ed Hernandez will be having a holiday open house. We're located on 100 South Vincent Avenue, which is the Foothill Building right here next to the mall. So come on over, meet your neighbors, meet the senator, bring your ideas about legislation. Also, the West Covina Police Department or Police Association and Gabriel Menares Group is also holding at the same time a toy drive. So come on by and drop off a toy, enjoy some refreshments. Again, it's on Thursday, December 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lisa Mayo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I represent They Will Know, which is a nonprofit organization that teaches teens about domestic violence. I was fortunate enough to have Karen, which has been going to a couple of my functions. And I want to be able to have the backing so that I could keep on introducing it to the high schools. West Covina High School did perform one of the plays that I wrote on domestic violence, which is to teach teens the 25 signs, how to prevent domestic violence. So that is really what I'd like to do and be able to have a meeting with school superintendent or whomever it is that I can continue with my program.
Okay, thank you. Barbara Sapolda.
Good evening. I'm going to admit that this is my first time. I'm extremely nervous, and I may take the entire five minutes. I'm basically here to ask the city of West Covina for some help. I own a condo in the city of West Covina. It's a 215-unit complex. We presently have five board members, president down to a secretary. In my opinion and the opinion of most residents there, we are now becoming a small city of bell. I'm very fearful that our many's are not being used appropriately. The present board is not abiding by any of the bylaws, any of the CCNRs. I do attend every meeting, and each meeting that I attend and bring something to their attention, whether it be a question about maybe our electricity, why is it always on, our water bill, why is it so high? I pretty much get, okay, let's have the next speaker. I've been ignored for four years. I've gone on the website to try to locate an organization that actually oversees HOAs, and there is no such agency. I actually have exhausted pretty much everything that I can in terms of resources, and I don't know where else to turn. I understand that this may not be something that city council can handle or look into. But again, I'm very fearful. We have a lot of residents who are seniors, and our dues continue to go up. And we also have a lot of homeowners who are losing their property or just walking away because of the retaliation. I happen to be one of the homeowners who probably speaks for the other 214 because they are fearful. But I, my voice needs to be heard. So I'm really hoping that coming here tonight, I can be guided to where someone can help the situation.
We will refer you to our staff, and they can give you some information, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Herford, council members. First of all, I would like to say congratulations to Councilmember Herford for his reelection to the council. Our city, like other cities, are in financial trouble. We need real leadership. I do believe he is the right person for the job to help us get through these hard times. I also want to say congratulations to newly-elected Councilmember Fred Sykes. We need leadership and our followers. I know there has been bad feelings between our four other members of this council and Fred Sykes. But I would hope this new council will be willing to work together, and let's say the past is the past. I can't say forget all the things that have been said in the past, but let's start a new year with a new start and go from there. We now have five council members who are individuals and are leaders in our city. Good luck to this council. I really hope we all can work together and turn our city around. Last, I would ask this council to adjourn this meeting in the name of Thomas Gillum, who passed away November 7th in 1972. He was a West Covina City Council member. Thomas Gillum's got it right. Once a Marine, always a Marine. So I say rest in peace, Marine, and simplify. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Shoemaker.
Wow, it's a little different being on this side of the podium. You guys have a bit more people than normally show up to our school board meetings. But I am here tonight because I was made aware of a couple of questions that were asked by Mr. Toohey at the last council meeting regarding what I should and shouldn't know as a board member in West Covina Unified. And so unfortunately, tonight is the new meeting for the new council, but I feel that this is time-sensitive. And so, Mr. Toohey, yes, we are expected to know what goes in on our district. No, we can't always know what goes on in our district. I was extremely disappointed to hear that you, of all people, decided to use a terrible incident that happened at one of our campuses to try and make a point to my father. So, you know, I have supported you for a long time. You have supported me for a long time. And so it was doubly shocking for me to hear those remarks come from you, especially knowing that in my last election, somebody did a political hit piece using the same type of incident. And I know your reaction to that. I welcome Mr. Sykes to the council. I know you're going to learn fast that you can represent the entire city, myself included, and I look forward to seeing that. One of the other things I was disappointed about at the last meeting is the outgoing council member insinuated that Mr. Herb Redholz had a part in a political hit piece against Mr. Sykes. And I was disappointed that the council members, who he has considered friends, not one of you said, "We know it wasn't him." And you guys are well aware that it wasn't him. And so I ask, as the new council member is sworn in, Mr. Herford, you start your new term. Mr. Toohey, Ms. Lane, and Ms. Sanderson, you continue your terms, that you remember that we are all here to represent the people of our community. It is not about us and our interests, it is about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Forrest Wilkens. Mr. Toohey.
I just want to make it quite clear. What happened at the last council meeting is comments were made about our police chief. And because we've had an incident with one officer, there was implications made about the entire department and what type of department we operate here. And I stood by our police chief and our police officers. That's what was said. And I tried to explain that this is because one officer made a very poor judgment on an incident that happened. It's no reflection on the entire department. And what I related it to was the incident involving Walnut Grove School, where a school teacher had a relationship with a 7th grader. And again, that is no, and I want to repeat again, that is no reflection on every teacher in West Covina Unified. It was an isolated incident. And that's the same thing that happened in this department. And I believe our police chief and all the police officers that are behind you were being spoken down to and ridiculed that that police chief should be dealt with and taken out, basically, for what has happened. And I do find that appalling. No different, like I said, what that one teacher did at Walnut Grove School, which he's pleaded no contest to, I believe is inappropriate. But we have fine teachers in West Covina Unified, and it has no reflection on the rest of the teachers we have in the school district because one isolated incident. That's what I stated, and I stand by that. And I stand by our police chief. And what was said about our police chief was highly wrong. And we have a great police department here. And it's one of the top police departments in the United States.
We're all through. Jessica.
Why don't you guys speak afterwards?
Excuse me, I'm the mayor. You've already had your opportunity, Mr. Toohey responded, so. I had asked for no negative comments, but you saw fit to. Yeah, I think it was. But, Mr. Forrest Wilkens. That's okay, I can't request, I can't do anything more than request anyways.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations.
Thank you.
And greetings to everybody. Mr. Toohey, last council meeting, you made reference that no one came to your defense on a hit piece against you. When an organization or a person uses a gun in a hit piece against you or any member of the West Covina City Council, I will be here to express my outrage. There is no place in any campaign in the city of West Covina that the use of a gun is acceptable. After last council meeting, I conducted a cursory investigation. First, no one on the council said they were connected with that hit piece displaying a gun. I checked with the president of the West Covina Peace Officers Association, his organization, no connection with that hit piece. I checked with Gary Clifford, chief operating officer of Athens Trash Collection, no knowledge. Then I checked with the Secretary of State of California and ran the return address. Taxpayers for Safer Neighborhoods in San Clemente, in San Juan Capistrano. ID number 1271053. I will read from a paper copy that I printed from the website. Taxpayers for Safer Neighborhoods. No on Major O in Montebello, with major funding from Athens Services. Check on Athens Services. There is over nine business organizations connected with Athens Group, which has a mailing address in the city of industry. They are Athens Disposal Company, Athens Express Company, Archilien Real Estate LLC, Archilien Silmar Real Estate, Archilien Sun Valley Real Estate, Jack Archilien Family LLC, Legacy Property Holding Vincent Avenue, Legacy Property Holding Pacoima, Legacy Property Holding Ron Archilien, Ron Archilien III. As of September 23rd of this year, information obtained from the 460 forms, which I have here, the last two city council elections, four veteran city council members and one who was not elected received $50,230 in campaign money from Athens Business Group. The city has an evergreen contract with Athens for the next 13 years. According to the Public Works Director and the Assistant City Manager, that contract expires in the spring of 2024. If one item on that contract is changed, it is automatically renewed to 2025. Now, I understand what Buzz Lightyear says when he says "to infinity and beyond." It really, the contract is evergreen, 13 years, is an infinity contract. So far, everyone who I have talked to about this issue thinks that is a conflict of interest between the council and Athens. And I'm suggesting anyone running for city council in West Covina that accepts contributions from the trash collector is not doing a service to our city. Athens has contracts with 24 cities. And if West Covina council race is similar to those cities, that means in the last two years, the Athens Trash Company has spread $1,205,520 for city council members to keep their jobs. Now, I've got less than a minute left. Yesterday, I went to Athens MRF, Material Resource Facility, had a tour. It is a state-of-the-art facility. They don't bury any of the trash, they recycle about 90% of it. And if they are a standalone company, like it appears to me, why are they donating to city councils? It just doesn't look good. It smells like they do it in trash business. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Irene Fleck.
Good evening.
Hi.
And congratulations and congratulations. Here's to a good new session. I'm talking about the proposed medical center. I'm in favor of progress and in making West Covina more modern and lively. I do not object to the new medical condo center, but I do object to the location. It is in the wrong building site. $183,000 per year income is certainly a positive factor. However, the same $183,000 would be forthcoming from the medical center if it were located in one of our other West Covina properties. The planned destruction of our beautiful and treasured area of green is sad indeed. And all of you have expressed how important having green is. The planned destruction is just very, very sad. This West Covina Civic Center island is beautiful trees and park-like grounds is an important and historic part of the city. For many years, people have enjoyed it as a unique place with its identity that is strictly West Covina. Its natural beauty is good for the body, the mind, and for the image of the city. To remove all of this and replace it with structures and parking lot paving is tragic. The site is a special place. It's not just the trees, but please let us preserve it.
Carolyn Arndt. Carolyn Arndt.
Good evening.
Hi.
I have come for this council several times, starting in 1985, begging for funds for food banking. thing that we have in the city. I drove a very small area of this city the day of the planning commission, and I have a handout for you. This is the addresses of the 10 places that I saw that have banners or signage for sale, lease, medical buildings. There is no big rush for any doctor or practitioner to move into the city. Now, Ms. Lee indicated that she had 30% rental. I question that because if that were the case, we would not have a brand-new building at the corner of Cameron and Orange that's been completed for some months, that's totally unused. The two tall buildings flanking the campus of the Queen of the Valley Hospital, they both have empty spots. Certainly, that's where a doctor should be. The buildings that are on Merced, that are across from Kaiser Hospital, that has nothing to do with those buildings, those both have a spot for a medical facility. I think, I think we don't need this. What we need is to take care of the young people in the future. The Boy Scouts from my church planted many of those trees. They love to go there. In fact, a 15-year-old was here before the planning commission indicating how much he had enjoyed romping up that hill and feeding the squirrels. We need to really think of the future. A fountain, no doctor cares nor patient if there's a fountain in front of a building. They want a competent, professional doctor who is in preventive care. And that's, that's what they want. If they're looking for a fountain, they should go to Beverly Hills. They can see all kinds of that sort of thing. But West Covina doesn't need it. So please, please, please rethink this. And here's your homework, right here. I'm gonna, that, somebody pass it out.
This, this item's actually on our next agenda, so we can't do anything about it tonight. But Beverly Boltis.
Thank you.
Congratulations. My name is Beverly Boltis, and I am asking the city council to reject the CGM development proposal and the plan to change the zoning of the civic center from public use to the neighborhood commercial. The civic, the civic center was meant for public use. And there are other good places for the medical building. You cannot possibly be getting that much money to cover the price that the builder is being compensated for for all the cost of removing so much earth, trees, shrubs, hauling it all to the dumps, and changing all the parking lots. The word is that the county, as far as the library is concerned, is okay with the parking changes. No one will give us any proof of this, and sources in the county won't give definite answers. But they suggest that they have strong concerns. I believe that we really are not getting all the true facts before everybody should know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jerry Sanchez.
Good evening, council members. I'm here to talk about the, I live around the Shadow Oak Park area. Okay, there's two things that I'd like to address. The first thing is that our streets look like a used car lot, you know, around where we live. And I'm sure that makes my home decrease even more because of this problem. I don't know why this is, but now, the city also says that we should get our neighbors to agree whether we want 10 cars in one home or make it look like a single home residence. I really don't know why. You know, I'm concerned about the overnight parking, okay. There's some neighbors of mine that have really about 10 cars, okay. And I know that, I see a lot of very intelligent people in front of me. And I know that if, if it was happening in your neighborhood, you probably would have a problem. Okay, just like I do. I'm upset, but I'm dealing with it.
Let me, let me see if I can help you a little bit. You're, you're looking for a permit parking on your street. Is that what you would like?
Well, you know, for, yeah, that's, that's part of it. Yeah. Why don't you have that?
We do. We have a procedure where you have to survey the entire street. The city will do that for you.
But, no, our neighbors are supposed to agree to that. Is that correct?
50% of the people have to agree.
Why?
Higher.
I don't understand why.
Because we, we've addressed the issue at the council level, and the council hasn't decided to ban parking on the streets overnight.
Okay, there must be something behind that because the city of West Covina.
There was a lot of people that came out and spoke.
Well, yeah, I know. But this is my first time talking about it. I've been with the city of West Covina now going on over five years. And, you know, I enjoy living in West Covina. I just thought, you know, I, I wish there, I think, I wish there would have been less noise, especially if I paid, you know, since I paid over $500,000 for my home. Not only do I hear the trains roaring all night. The other thing I want to talk to the council about is the street sweeping. You know, I see a street sweeper, the street sweeper come down my street, and it's sweeping in the middle of the street because there's tons of cars, right, parked on the street. What is it doing? And does anybody know about that? That's all it does, is roam around the neighborhood, doing nothing. And who's paying for that? You know, and I think I might need to be a little educated in regards to that. But who, who's paying for that? Can you help me with that? You know, I don't get it.
Why don't I have you meet with Shannon Yancey, who handles all of our parking issues and our street sweeping issues?
Where is she?
Shannon's on the end there.
Okay.
He can talk to you about the overnight parking and the surveying and all that.
And I guess if you guys would just put this overnight, you know, parking for certain people, I think they would think about it twice about bringing 10 or more cars and making their homes their body shop, oil change and whatnot. I know a lot of people are renting their homes for whatever reason, you know. And so if you guys could look into that, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Bertia Spatia.
Good evening, Mayor, council member and staff. Congratulations, Steve Hurford, and congratulations, Fred Sykes. I'm here because, as you all know, I live in a senior complex, supposedly a senior complex. And we had a blackout. Our blackout was for 24 hours and 15 minutes. We had people in our complex that are wheelchair-bound and on oxygen. I was the only one that's still old-school. When the lights went out at 3:45 a.m., I went to my closet, reached and pulled out my princess phone. Anybody remember the princess phones? Oh, you guys are two babies. That's right. You just put it in the jack and you dial away. I had a phone the whole time. What I was very disappointed about, and I don't know who to blame, and it's, it's not the city's fault, council members or police departments, can't believe that no one from the Red Cross would go to senior complexes and check the people. There was people there that couldn't even make food. Their family members didn't even care to come and check on them. And let me tell you, I'm all for going after people for elderly abuse. Because I told my boys, you don't check on me, I will be in the headlines. I will be under arrest. I'm serious. And it has all to do with the way we raise our kids. Some of us had to go with flashlights in the middle of the night checking these people during, the next day after 7:00 p.m. it was dark. Some of us had to go to one house, make sandwiches with flashlights, and give in to these people. So, and the sad thing is, well, like the news said, I was prepared. I'm prepared for the big earthquake. A lot of the people are not prepared, especially elderly people. Some of these people are 90 years old. And I'm hoping that next time anything happens like this, that an agency, if I knew who to contact next, for the next time, please let me know. I will contact somebody because somebody should have come out to check these people. And then to top it off, I didn't know that the water heaters were electric, so there was no hot water at all. So, but I stayed there. My son says, come on over here, Mom. I says, oh, no, they handed me here. And there was my dog and I at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning with our flashlights, checking. And my manager, he was useless. I had to call and tell him to open the gates manually. And it's a good thing because the fire trucks had to come in on orange. There he is with his cell phone, trying to do the gate. I had to go out there at 4:00 a.m. to help him with flashlights. I mean, for a manager of a complex not to be prepared, you have no business holding a position like that. And I was very disappointed in him. But, you know, some people are just there for their paycheck. Anyway, I wanted to share that. And another thing, the gentleman that spoke about the parking, I'm determined to come back this summer and bring the overnight paid parking. And also, I want to thank you for what you did in February 1st. You put up the street signs on Beddilo for no parking on sweep days every Tuesday. That place has never looked so good in seven years I've been there. I really think that a street sweep sign should be up through the whole city. And if you're parked there, give you a ticket. Who cares? But I feel for the gentleman, and I would love to see this whole city go with overnight permit parking. And I won't give up on that. I'll be back. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bruce Leinbach.
First of all, I want to wish Karen Ambrose and Herb, wish them well. Campaigned hard. Unfortunately, they didn't win. Congratulations to Mayor Hurford and Mr. Sykes. I want to remind everything that I'm a big passionate fan of the West Covina Bulldogs. And their last team left in San Gabriel Valley will be playing in the championship this Friday. Supposed to be at California School. It's against Los Arena. The last three playoffs they played, they won by 30 points or more. So we got a great team, one of the best ones they've ever had. I missed the game on Thanksgiving. It's the first game I've missed in 22 years. So they got a great team. I'm a real passionate fan. I went to Kaiser today, had my blood tested, and they said I had Bo Dog blood type. So they're my Bo Dogs. Also, I want to congratulate Fred Sykes. Fred has run for council three times. And he asked me for a small donation. I says, Fred. I shook my head, should I ask, shouldn't I? He had a lot of persistence. He worked on two initiatives. And since I've been the city of West Covina the last 20 years, elections I've been monitoring, or not monitoring, but seeing, I've never seen anybody ever come close to knock on the number of doors of Fred Sykes. He'd knock and knock and knock. Got defeated one time, two times, and he wouldn't give up. And, and I really, I really appreciate. And another thing, the funding, he had the smallest amount of funding elected, to be elected to the city council in the last 20 years. He only spent $10,000, $11,000 hours. His opponents, the incumbents spent many times more. But Fred gave us what you call is blood, sweat, and tears. Also, Fred, I'd like to ask you another question. Maybe you answer a question. How many pairs of shoes do you go through? And what type of shoes do you wear? So, I just want to make another comment. You know, I want to be positive. And I got congratulations, getting the award for most business friendly city. But one thing still bugs me. Why do we have to be the only city in LA County and San Bernardino County, over 100,000 hours, does not have any cable or internet for their city council meetings? Azusa spends $10,000 dollars on ours, theirs yearly. Temple City, $15,000. We have $400,000 hours in the kitty, cannot be touched until we renew our cable TV. And it's going to waste. And I feel that it brings the people, they see their cable or internet or whatever, both of them. I mean, it's not going to cost that much more. I feel we can afford it. And the people of West Covina deserve more. So I really feel that we can afford it somehow and do it. But please, give us, be able to view our meetings on TV live. Also, another thing is I want to talk about is kind of repulsive, the hit piece that came out, real repulsive. I know they did a hit piece against Mr. Tuohy about six years, six years ago or four years, four years ago, which was real deplorable. I didn't think it was right. And this one was real repulsive. I don't, nobody did, will own up to it or did it. Whatever done is wrong. Seems like every year, we, two years we have an election, we always have the hit pieces. And I think it's kind of bad. So in the future, I think we can refrain from those things. The better off we are. We have a hearing about this medical development. I'm opposed to it, but that's not the issue I'm trying to bring up. The hearing is going to be on 20th of December. That's probably the least likely that people will attend. It's a big issue for a lot of people, me, many people. You should make it at a date in January, preferably the last meeting in January, where the people can come to this meeting, give their viewpoints, and let you know. So they feel like they are, like the part, to be honest, it looks kind of, something's not right. You're having this real important meeting four days before Christmas, and, and people are basically excluded instead of included. So I really feel we should move that meeting to January. And I just want to say one thing overall. I think West Covina is a great place to live. Maybe work together as a city, continue to be a great place. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
You too.
And go, and go watch West Covina play.
John Schumaker.
I'd like to express, excuse me, I'd like to express my congratulations to Mayor Hurford for winning. But how many times in a row does this make you came in first? A bunch of times.
Congratulations, Fred. You know, you showed where, what you can do without having a lot of money and a lot of effort, you know. And I think that's going to show, you know, prove out to a lot of other people throughout the city that they have the, they have the chance, even if they don't have the money, if they work at it as hard as you did. So I congratulate you on your hard, great effort.
One of the reasons I'm up here tonight, outside of saying congratulations, is the continued mischaracterization that Mayor Pro Tem Tuohy wants to say of my, of my words. If it's painting a brush to the rank-and-file police officers who are on the streets to say that because of the mismanagement of the budget, these, these men and women are working way too many hours, that can harm them and harm the public, I don't see how. That's, that's charging them with a broad brush. If saying that some of the things that have gone on our, the police department over the last few years shows that you might have to look at the command staff and the decisions they're making and the people who they report to as to why those issues are occurring, that's not painting them with a broad brush. You control the budget. The city council controls the budget. The chief makes a lot of decisions on his own, makes recommendations on the budget. That's not painting the people who are on the streets with a broad brush. That's showing concern for them. When you look at different numbers and you see the number of officers who are patrolling our city go down, but the number of people who are in management positions basically stay the same, that's a concern. That's a concern for the men and women who are on the street every day. I'm not up here for political points or anything else. I'm not the one who gets upset sitting on the dais and starts yelling at members of the planning commission because they have a different opinion than you do. I'm not the one who stands over a planning commissioner who'd been in the hospital, who had his back operated on waving his finger in the man's face and yelling at him. Mike, I've known you for a long time and have always respected you. What's happened? What's happened? Mike, I've considered you a friend for many years. And somebody who I've supported and will continue to support. will continue to support. I'm just asking what, what's wrong? Yes, we're all going to have disagreements. I have disagreements with all of you, but that doesn't mean I respect you any less or anything along those lines. So, you know, yes, I'd like to talk to you afterwards because I want to put an end to this. I'm concerned for this city. You're one of the guys at the top, so you get poked at. Believe me, I know what it's like to sit at the top of a company and get poked at all the time, too. It's not pleasant. But it's not out of, I don't say things up here out of meanness, or I want to get under your skin or do something. It's out of concern. If it has gotten under your skin because I've been me, I apologize for that. But that's still, you know, like I said, I've always looked up at what you've done and what you try to do for people, all of you. You know, and I hope it gets, you know, the next couple of years at least, I don't know what all of you are going to be doing, but I hope it's, it gets back to being about the people in our community. It always has been. This, this place used to be a lot of fun years ago. I hope it gets back to that, you know, to come in and have some fun with the different things that were going on. So I hope we can return to that. Nothing that's said is aimed at you personally. All of you, I think, are good people who try to do your best. Will we disagree? Yeah. I disagree with my wife. I think you probably disagree with your husbands and your wives once in a while, too. Okay? So that's all I'm looking at. I'm going to continue to be up here and say things that are, you know, hey, this is a concern that I have. I think I have a right to say that as a member of the public. Once in a while, you're going to agree with me, and once in a while, you're probably not. But none of it's aimed at you as an individual. It's not aimed at Sheldon, or Sherry, or Steve, or Mike. It's aimed at council member Sanderson, Lane, Mayor Hereford, and Mayor Pro Tem Toohey. Big difference. Okay? Thank you.
And John, I would just say that I agree with a lot of your comments. My police chief's in a situation where he can't come to the podium. I'm, I gave you your opportunity, sir.
I understand.
Our police chief doesn't have a chance to come to the podium and defend himself. So there were still, you know, comments within what you stated that are not factually correct. Number one, our number of officers on our streets have not changed. That is incorrect. The number of management staff backing up those officers have taken a decrease, and they are managing on very thin ice. But the patrol officers, the number of patrol officers we have has not changed. That is factually incorrect, and I'm making sure I will always stand behind my police chief. A lot of our staff can't fight back. They're in a situation where they're staff. So I will, I appreciate your comments, and we will sometimes disagree. For many years, we have agreed. Obviously, I've been up here for 16 years, so there's many times we've agreed and disagreed. But I will stand behind my police chief. He's a hometown boy that was born here, raised here, and I believe is doing a great job. And I believe the officers, based on their numbers, I understand their, they do not have all the people in administration, as was just stated. That is not true. In fact, we have less officers in administration than almost any other department in the state of California when it comes to amount of people in the administration to patrol people. So I just want to make sure that is not what's happening here, and our police department is fine. There's no question there has been some that have erred, and, and that is not a reflection on the entire department. That's a reflection on themselves. And that's the point I was trying to distinguish between the difference. We can't paint a broad brush because of what one person does, because there's a hundred other officers that do a great job each and every day, and I want to make sure we compliment them and talk about them. We don't talk about the exception. We talk about the rule of thumb. And we do have a great police chief and a great police staff, and I will stand 100% behind him.
No problem.
Okay, thank you. Jefferson Daru.
Good evening, council. Merry Christmas. I've been up here on numerous occasions, probably been perceived as a bit antagonistic, and at times probably outright pompous ass. But tonight, I really want to thank you for the results of the study and what transpired as a result on Cameron and Lark Island. It was a health and safety issue that I brought to council regarding the traffic flow adjacent to the elementary, the park, and the high school. And the signs that have been placed, I think are going to make a big difference in regards to the safety of the children that cross that intersection Monday to Friday, and during the weekend as well. So thank you very, very much for your prompt action on that matter. And I can't promise you that that pompous and antagonistic person won't be back in the future, but tonight, thank you and Merry Christmas.
Thank you and Merry Christmas. Okay, is Rita Medina here? Rita, why don't you present the proclamation after Fred's sworn in, if that's okay? Is that right?
Thank you.
Yeah. Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is that all the speaker cards?
That's all speaker cards.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick comment. A resident had brought forward the meeting on the CGM and staff. I believe there is a deadline. I just wanted to make sure that the people knew that we weren't trying to bring it in on Christmas time. I think on an appeal, there's like a 30-day or, or something. Maybe you can make a brief comment on that so we're clear. Thank you.
Well, anytime somebody appeals something, there's a certain time period that has to be heard, and I think that's what.
Yeah, I don't recall the exact time. I don't know if Jeff is up here or not. Jeff?
Well, no, it's okay. I mean, I just, I don't.
I believe it is 30 days you have to do the hearing. Is that correct? 10 days, sorry.
Oh, so they're, okay.
Forty-five days, I'm sorry.
Okay. I knew there was like a timeframe with meetings and, so, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Moved by Lane, second by Hereford. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Any council member reports? Any requests for reports, studies, or investigations? Councilmember Toohey.
I'd like to, based on what happened in the debate and comments made by all four of the candidates, I want to agendize for the next council meeting as my first act as mayor, webcasting council meetings for the future, as soon as we can get it approved and installed.
Okay, so that'll go on the next agenda. Okay. Any other comments from councilmembers? Anything agendized? Okay, with that, we have election results. So at this time, I will, we will certify the results of general municipal election held on November 8th, 2011. City manager, who will present the staff report?
Sue Rush will do that report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. On November 8th, 2011, a general municipal election was held to elect two members of the West Covina City Council. The results were certified by the county clerk on November 21st and approved by the Board of Supervisors on November 22nd. The results are as follows. There are 49,074 registered voters, a total of 7,177 ballots cast. By a majority vote of 3,609 votes, by Steve Hereford, 3,282 votes for Fred Sykes. The two have been elected as members of the city council. A motion is in order to adopt Resolution 201157, reciting the facts of the election results and declaring the results of the November 8th election.
Do you have a motion? Moved by Toohey, second by Lane. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Administration of the oath.
Mr. Hereford, if you'd like to step forward for the oath of office.
I, Steve Hereford. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Against, and the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Discharge the duties on about, upon which I'm about to enter. You're more nervous than I am. For the city of West Covina. For the city of West Covina.
Congratulations. [applause]
Mayor, Mayor Hereford?
Steve.
Mayor Hereford. I'd like to present you with the certificate of election.
Thank you.
And have you signed your oath of office.
Thank you.
And at this point in time, I'd like to have councilmember-elect Fred Sykes to join Assemblymember Roger Hernandez at the podium to administer his oath of office.
Okay, well, folks, just want to let you all know that this execution is required by Article 20, Section 3 of our state constitution. So as a California lawmaker, it gives me tremendous honor to come back as a former mayor to provide this oath here to our newly-elected city councilman, Mr. Sykes. So Fred, if you'll please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yes.
I state your name.
I, Fred U.S.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the State of Calif, I'm sorry, the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
And that I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position upon which I am about to enter.
Of the position of which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, John.
Fred, if you'd like to take your seat.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I think it's appropriate for Councilmember Sykes and myself to make a few comments. I'd like to have you go first, Mr. Sykes.
First of all, it's wonderful. First of all, it's wonderful to see such a turnout tonight. And to all of you who haven't stood at the door, thank you. Thank you very much, and I thank you in advance for your support.
Okay, first off, I want to thank the residents of West Covina for having faith in my leadership to reelect me again to the city council. I want to thank, obviously, my family. I want to start with my mom and my dad, who's deceased, but for their leadership when I was growing up to teach me how to give out to others. And I grew up in West Covina. I love this community, so I appreciate serving the people, this city. Also, I want to thank my wife, Jan, my two daughters, Jennifer and Melissa, who are here tonight, and her husbands, Adam and Will. Without family supporting you as a city council member, it's, it's very difficult. I'm going to get to my granddaughter in just a sec. I also want to thank my council colleagues. We will form a team, the five of us. We've had teams here for many years, and it's always great to draw on people that are intelligent and care about the city of West Covina. Also, I want to thank the staff who, over the years, have made West Covina my home, and long after I'm gone, will still be here, many of them, although not the same people, but they do a tremendous job. Friends that, that helped in the campaign, and I'm focusing a little bit on the campaign right now, but I want to thank Betty Vias, who always is a big help to me. I want to thank Tom O'Donnell, who is like my brother, does an outstanding job in campaigns and works harder than anybody I ever met in campaigns, and he's a tremendous asset. And Matt and BJ Walters, my neighbors, and all of my friends that, you know, got involved in campaigns are very difficult, you know. We, we put up over 1,300 signs. I replaced one sign in, in one yard 10 times. I also want to thank the POA, the Fire Association, for their support of my campaign, all my neighbors and my business, and the business community. And the highest point in the entire, entire election process was the birth of my granddaughter, McKinley Anne. It was a special, special day, and she was born on September 21st. She weighs seven pounds, four ounces, and she's here tonight to see me sworn in, so it's a special night, so I'm very proud of her. So with that, I, I'm honored. I thank you again, and I look forward to serving the residents of West Covina. Thank you.
Before I go down and take my oath, if I could turn the mic back over temporarily to Councilmember Fred Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Toohey. Tonight, I have my family who've driven some distance to get here. I have my father, Mr. M.C. Sykes. He's 84. He's here today. I have my older brother. He didn't have to come too far. He lives one city over, Diamond Bar. He lives by his neighbors, Nathaniel Sykes. I have a guy that drove about 60 miles. He's still doing his duty for the, for the public. He's the deputy sheriff of Los Angeles County. He's my brother, Kenneth Sykes. There's also a movie star in the house. Have you seen Boys in the Hood? His name is Bowen Clark Sykes. Unfortunately, I have sisters that have decided to make a career of being postal workers. And if you've been listening to the news lately, you probably know why they're not here. But unfortunately, Bonnie and Brenda Sykes, they couldn't make it tonight. Duty called for them at the postal service, so unfortunately, I'm not able to meet them. And of course, I have with me my wife, Dana Sykes. She's been with me through thick and thin. I think a lot of you know her because she was there wearing her shoes out, too, as Bruce put it. And thank you. Thank you all from the time beginning and to the night. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, we will begin the council reorganization. To do that, we need to confirm the mayoral secession, and the order of the secession tonight would be Councilmember Toohey rotating to the position of mayor, and Councilwoman Lane becoming the mayor pro tem. This requires a vote of the council, so I will make a motion to appoint Councilmember Toohey to mayor and Councilwoman Lane to mayor pro tem.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5 to 0. At this time, the oath will be given to Mayor Toohey. Please approach the podium.
Please approach the podium. I'm sorry, I have my daughter, Morgan, who's going to be swearing me in along with my son, Brandon, and my wife, Debbie, here.
I'm Mike Tuie.
I'm Mike Tuie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Well, without any mental reservation? Or purpose of evasion? That I will well and faithfully discharge? The duties in which the duties I'm about to enter. For the city of West Covina. Thank you. At this point in time, if I could have former mayor Steve Hurford come down here, please.
Steve, it is my extreme honor to present you with your outgoing mayor plaque. I've had the pleasure to serve with you for many years, and I got involved with Steve right here at this podium when my business was firebombed, and he offered to help me out when no one else would. So, I'll never forget that in 1991, what you did, and when I was fortunate enough to get elected with you in 1994. You've been a great friend and a great mayor. I want to congratulate you. At this point in time, I'd like to make sure I introduce my family once again. My wife, Debbie. Debbie, who's in the front row. My daughter, Morgan. And my son, Brandon. When I got into politics here, my daughter was three and my son...my wife was pregnant with my son, and it's been many years, like I said, we had an interesting journey, too, here. What got me involved, obviously, was my business was firebombed three times in 54 days in 1991, which I'll never forget the rest of my life. Like I said, we've had a great run here. Bill Tarazi, who's always been my campaign manager and supported me. Bill, will you please stand up? Bill's dad is what we kind of all campaigned on the back of. Bill's dad is the former mayor of West Covina, and he was just a great leader and taught a lot of us ever since then what can do, and we learned a lot from his son, Bill, to carry on also. Like I said, Bill's been the type of guy to kick you in the butt when you need to get kicked in the butt, and even when you...what you hear here today, the difference in politics, and I know, Fred, you would have learned this, and I know Steve's been through it for many times, you need people around you to tell you what you need to hear, not necessarily what you want to hear. And I'm saying, doing this for as many years as I've done it, it's nice to have people sometimes that will tell you when you're wrong, because not all people will do that, and the true friends will tell you when you're wrong, or they believe that you're wrong, and they may disagree with you. I think that's been the hallmark of, you know, being able to serve many different councils here. The residents, over the number of years, like I said, Bruce Leinbach goes back to my days at my dairy, orange juice. He got a pint of orange juice every day, drove through going to the real estate office next door. Just a different community, and I think times have changed. Our community has changed, but I think we have a lot of great things going. I know not all the residents know about it, but just recently, we were voted the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County. We were very proud of that award, and today, we received all sorts of recognition, which you're going to be finding out about at the next council meeting, for what we've done in energy savings-wise, but we're on the cusp of being the...one of the first cities, or the first city in the state of California to receive a platinum recognition for our energy savings. And I think that this goes to the leadership of our staff and everything they do. I want to thank my council, because I know we've got to get out of here and go have fun, but truly, we're going to continue doing what we've done, continue the business climate we have here to make people that want to come here and create jobs. We have unemployment, too, and you need projects or businesses expanding. We have a lot of new restaurants coming out, as you have seen, our mall's on fire. There's over $100 million being invested in that mall property, our main mall. The other mall property has millions upon millions of dollars being invested, and we're one of the very few cities in Southern California right now to say, over the next year and a half, we have around $300 million in new projects coming, and that's...our residents need jobs, too. They're either underemployed or unemployed, and people need jobs, and we need to continue to grow this diverse economy we have here in West Covina, and there's a lot of competition with neighboring cities. And if you tell them no, the next city will tell them yes, because they all need the tax dollars to keep our employees employed and to give them the benefits and everything people want and expect, and the services, the residents that are all here today, the types of services you want and expect, and that's what we hear a lot about, a lot of different things the city needs. The 12 new firefighters we have on duty and the new light force unit that we're putting into service. It's just...it's an amazing time in this city, and I'm very proud that I've gotten to serve here for 16 years, and I'm glad and proud I get to serve the next year as mayor. It's all ceremonial, we just rotate, so it's only for one year, so I'll be proud during that year, and we'll see where it leads me to go. But I want to thank my colleagues. I want to thank, congratulate Steve Hurford for your election to the city council, and also, Fred, I want to congratulate you. You've...that scared me. I don't know who did that, but I'm going to go to the bathroom after we're done here. But Fred, there's no question, you have walked every house. I don't know how many, and even though Bruce made it into a joke, how many pairs of shoes you've gone through, but that's honestly what it takes to get...all of us have done that in different times in our campaigns, and knocking on doors is where it's all at, and getting out there and meeting the people. And I got to give it to you, you did walk, not always with the shoes we agreed with, but you were there in the forefront walking, so I congratulate for your victory. And I just want to thank everyone after this. I want to make sure you know everyone's invited. I do have a gathering over at Crazy Horse, and everyone here is very welcome there to partake in some food and some appetizers and just enjoy and speak to each other, but everyone here is welcome there. Thank you very much.
Yes. Councilmember Lane.
I just want to say congratulations again to everybody, councilmember...mayor, outgoing mayor, Steve Hurford. Thank you for a great year as mayor. You did a great job, and it's an honor to serve with you. I want to congratulate Councilmember Fred Sykes. I think we're going to look forward to a great year, and I look forward to serving with you. I know you did a lot of work, and you care about the city, and I think you'll do a great job. And Mayor Tuie, I want to thank you and congratulate you as well, and looking forward to serving with you, and also Councilmembers Sanderson.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sanderson?
That'll ask for the floor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to first thank everybody for being here tonight. It's great to see the council chambers filled and hope everybody continues to come back. We really enjoy you all being here. First, I'd like to say, interestingly, we have all kind of evolved and gotten involved for a reason, or gotten up here for a reason, and then we realize how much city politics means to our city and what it can do, and how making a difference...getting involved does make a difference. I want to congratulate Steve. You are an amazing leader, and I am grateful and thankful you did run again, because I'm...as a...I'm a resident, too, not just a councilperson. You've taken this city to some amazing levels, and without your leadership and your strengths, it wouldn't be the business...when we received that award, it was just so fitting that you were able to be there to accept it, because you are Mr. West Covina. I mean, people appreciate what you do, and I just want to make sure you know how much that means to me and your service as mayor. I also want to congratulate Mr. Sykes, Councilmember Sykes, for his hard work and dedication and caring and knowing that his vision and he's going to bring to the forefront and make a difference in our community. I also want to say congratulations to Mayor Tuie. I look forward to your leadership, and I've always loved...everybody's laughing, and you're a great human being, you're a great friend, and getting involved with you guys, staying...I was started on that side, you know, as well, and got up here because you guys just really brought me to that level, and it's been an amazing friendship, and I cherish every minute of it. You sit up here sometimes, and it's difficult, because it can be hard, but then you look at the people that you serve with, and I want to congratulate Sherry as well for mayor pro town, and look forward to your leadership in the following year and working with everybody. And lastly, and not leastly, I'd like to thank all our staff. Without them, we wouldn't have a lot of these businesses coming to our community and everything you do, and I have to make sure I thank whoever brought Michael's. I actually, my husband will not thank you for that, because it's an amazing place to go, especially during the holidays, but we do appreciate all the stores and everything that you guys do for us, so just wanted to make sure my gratitude for everybody and everybody, what they do, I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Okay, we're going to drop down to the...one of the last items, designation of alternate to the Los Angeles County Sand District, but before I do that, I want to notice that the three members on this side of me, on my left side of me, need to pay attention that the bald people on this council are gaining. We just doubled in population. And with Steve Hurford's head, we have two and a half bald people, but... I think we constitute a majority now, so just wanted to say that. But as mayor, I become the city's delegate to the Los Angeles County Sand District. However, the district requires a designation of an alternate to serve in my absence. As I was previously the alternate, the city council must appoint any member of the council to serve as the alternate to act in the absence of the director. May I have a motion to designate an alternate director?
A motion for Lane, Councilwoman Lane, or mayor pro tem Lane.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Sanderson and seconded by Hurford for mayor pro tem Lane for alternate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries five-oh. We drop down to, I believe, adjournments, correct? We have a...is there any other comments anyone would like to make before we adjourn? Or we have a number of adjournments, unfortunately, tonight, from members of our community who passed away. If Council...or former mayor Steve Hurford could please read them.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals: former West Covina councilmember Thomas Gillum, Lupi Marones, mother of Rachel Heroda with the city's Human Resources Department, George Hernandez, former volunteer of West Covina Police Department Shop Program, Thomas Genovese, city manager of La Quinta and brother of retired West Covina Assistant Fire Chief Rick Genovese. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Gillum, Marones, Hernandez, and Genovese families as we adjourn tonight's meeting in their memory.
Do I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned upstairs. We're first going to cut cake and punch upstairs, and then we're...if you want to, you're very welcome to Crazy Horse. Thank you very much.